I want to call the March 18th, 2025 Regular Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Moritz.
Here.
Sharrick.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Me.
You have the minutes from March 4th, 2025 Regular Council meeting in front of you. Has anybody got questions on them?
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion to approve. Mr. Moritz seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Granting permission for visitors to speak. Are there any visitors that would like to address council? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Great White, 1125 Hillcrest Tribe. Thank you, Mr. President. Since members of this council don't like the way I redress my government or state, do we have to listen or hear this again? I'm going to talk about comments. First of all, the comments on the city of Bucyrus's site, which the city owns all rights and privileges to, need to be shown until the next day. The law director has even stated in past meetings that most of these comments do not have anything to do with the content of the meeting or any topics being addressed. And it brings a bad image to the prospective businesses coming into our community. I would disagree with this about a First Amendment violation. Remember, I'm not an attorney, but other cities don't let this happen. They are not being sued over this. It's simple. Come to the meetings, state your name, and speak. Follow the rules of order of that government body. Even Mr. Mead stated in a recent article, no members of the public show up to these meetings. Not one good comment usable from Facebook. This article went on to say that this deters investments, that this makes Bucyrus look unprofessional. If some people are not aware of, I became a victim of cyberbullying and threats. A Facebook post from Margot O'Rourke on the City Live Meeting site. Something major is going to break, Greg. I hope that you have good health insurance. Then, Greg, meet me in the parking lot. Then, he's going to keep this meeting as long as possible to avoid me in the parking lot. A police report was made to Officer Dalton and Connor with body cams on during the complaint. Still, nothing has been done yet. This is not a joke. It is a crime. Yet, the police department and the law director seem not to believe that no harm, no foul. Why is this not being properly investigated under high-rise code for these crimes? I have talked to the law director, even sent an email to him on this matter. Still, nothing. Yes, he wanted me to come back in and talk about this, but why? I ask. Just do your jobs as sworn, as the oath you took upon these laws. If you don't feel that this is a crime, then answer the question from my email. Put it in writing and sign it. That's why I have your opinion in this matter. In closing, members of this council are or have been members of a certain group. And there are new people running for city offices that are members of this group also. One of them was the administrator of this group. Another one hides behind what I believe is called Gay Steve, and that this person is running for the treasurer's position of the city. Anyway, record the meetings and then post it after the meetings. I really don't believe that many residents from nursing homes are staying up to watch council meetings. You have to consider the source of the comment, because they want to use this as a platform for this group and for running at council at large. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to call upon you to make a decision in this matter. Okay? The other thing I want to address too, when I do have time, is that I have spoke to council and as a public citizen and resident, I do not have to give public records. I'm not elected official. I do not have to comment to any emails that I so choose not to. Okay? So, with that said, thank you.
Thank you, council. Elmer Cop, I am a local musician and I'm also a blogger. So, do I need to state my address?
Preferably.
All right. 358 Carmel Ave., Gallion, Ohio, 44833. So, while this is a big topic here in the regulations, I just want to say selective restrictions, if a government entity allows some comments while selectively deleting or blocking others based on viewpoint, then it would be considered a First Amendment violation. Starting, so shutting off comments on a live stream on a government website or any government-related social media can be a First Amendment violation if the government is using that platform for official business and selectively restricts comments based on viewpoint. But not all, but not all if all comments are turned off. So, Greg pretty much iterated the comments that were made on there. I'm going to pass them out to you guys if you don't mind. But one that he did not mention, and I want to read this to you guys, because like he said, nothing, nothing this relates to any of what you guys talk about. But Stephanie Boer, I just want to throw this out there, this is the name, she's replying to Andrew Rayborn. She only got off because Trucca didn't show up, didn't want his secret out, obviously. So, maybe this is a reason why you guys need to start regulating things. Turn off all the comments. And back to the Gay Steve, like he just mentioned, that should be Bucyrus Treasury candidate right there. Hairlines don't lie. I'll pass them out to you guys as well. Thank you.
Is there, Mr. Cop, is it like one, do I take one sheet or?
Pass them along now, let the rest of them.
Didn't explain. Thank you much.
Any other public participation? Seeing none. Moving on to communications and petitions. First with an email from A. Casey Pollak.
Ms. Wise, I would like to make a request from city council. Unfortunately, due to my work schedule, I am not always available to be home and able to attend meetings in person. I would like to formally request that South Walnut Street be a two-way street from Mansfield Street all the way to Beale Avenue. With the closure of GE and no new suitors for the building, there is no reason for this to be a one-way section of the street any longer. Let's be honest, with mail order shopping on the rise, the increase in delivery vans, trucks, and supplies on residential streets has dramatically increased all over Bucyrus. The excuse of truck traffic can no longer be used to maintain the small stretch of one-way traffic on the street. I realize that with the water fund and other issues surrounding council, this may seem very small, but for one resident of South Walnut Street, this is not a small issue and it should be addressed. Thank you. Casey Pollak, 818 South Walnut Street.
Do we have to make the referrals to the traffic, or can they just bring it up on their own?
Because it was sent to us and not mailed to them.
Okay. Mr. Myers made a motion to refer this to Traffic Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Zion, Mr. Hickman was the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next letter.
We have a letter from Angie Rayborn. City Council, the recent events and discussions taking place involving the city's finances and solutions are very discouraging. The idea of revoking the out-of-town workers' tax credit always seems to be the first on the list of what to do. By doing this, you are essentially attacking one portion of our local population. The majority of us who work out of town do so because the jobs we have, we did have here, are no longer available. We left town to work so that we make, so that we take care of our families. We still shop here. We have children in the local school systems. We participate in our community and we pay taxes. Bucyrus has approximately 11,500 citizens. There are approximately 1,700 out-of-town workers and approximately 4,000 persons working in city limits who pay into the city income tax. So, combined, there are only approximately 5,700 individuals in this community who are employed out of 11,500. So, essentially, less than half the population works. I have been employed within Mansfield city limits for 14 years. I pay Mansfield city taxes, which are currently 2.25%, the same as Bucyrus. I also pay on every local levy that has passed. If you revoke this credit, 4.5% of my pay will go to the local taxes. Myself and others will be double taxed, and that is disgusting. Myself and others will make the tough decisions to leave this town. Maybe that's what needs to happen, so that the population will dwindle and Bucyrus can be a village and not a city. Absolutely, no one wants to pay more taxes. We are already taxed way too much on every level, but double taxing one portion of our population is just wrong, especially when there are no competitive jobs in our city. If more taxes are absolutely necessary to fix the issues the Bucyrus administration has gotten us in, then it has to be done fairly and across the board. Sincerely, Angie Rayborn, 218 East Center Street.
The motion accepted. Follow both letters?
Both.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sharrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Standing Committee reports. Plating Committee, Mr. Me.
No report at this time.
Any questions for Plating Committee? Public Lands and Buildings Committee, Ms. Sharrick.
No report at this time.
Any questions for Public Lands and Buildings? Health and Safety Chairwoman, Mrs. DeShawn.
We are waiting on draft legislation for food trucks, taxi cab insurance requirements, peddlers and solicitors law, and animals and foul. End of my report.
Any questions for Health and Safety? Finance Committee, Mr. Myers.
No report.
Any questions for Finance Committee? I have a question. The out-of-town tax credit, it was discussed at the last committee meeting and it said the committee was saying, we don't, well, let's just wait till after the levy. That's not what was said?
I don't believe the committee expressed that interest at all.
We had said that it would affect the tax rate.
They said that pending the outcome of the street levy could impact the dollars that come in. So, she was saying for her math figures, she would have to wait until after that to give us figures.
Well, I can give, so, some are discussing it. No, you're fine. Kelly had provided this, I think you guys received an email back in January, and it is saying what we believe, sorry, I should have printed it out for you, is saying what she believes we would bring in under the current tax rate, what we're, where we're currently at with the street levy. So, what you would do is you could go through here, say, if we need to make, I think when Kevin had pulled up the, asked the chiefs what they would need to continue on, it came out to about $560,000 a year for equipment for the property tax levy. If we wanted to bring in roughly amount, that amount of money from the out-of-town workers' credit, you would have to limit it at 0.5% of a credit. And then, you would just want to take the, only the two funds excluding the street levy and add those together to see that that would bring in about 500, I think, $20,000. So, but that will change if the street levy doesn't pass, because that affects the tax rate. Instead of our tax rate being 2.25%, it would be 1.75%, because the street levy is 0.5%. So, Kelly is trying to run those numbers for me now, but because it's tax season, she's a little bogged down right now in the office.
So, a lot of times when something goes on as a levy, like a school, they'll say, okay, we need this money. This is what's going to happen. If you pass the levy, this is what's going to happen. If the levy don't pass, I think with early voting starting here within a couple of weeks, I think we need to be upfront and honest with the citizens, what's going to happen if this levy doesn't pass, being the street levy renewal, so that the voters know when they go into the ballot box, you know, they can be more informed before they cast their votes.
And I guess I'm willing to say this. So, what would happen is if I turn in here, sorry, guys. So, we are budgeting for the street levy to bring in 1.75 million dollars. So, if we lose that 1.75 million dollars from the street levy, then that's something that would probably be supplemented from the general fund, similar to other things. Remember, I always say it's like, the general fund's like, oh, negative blood. You can move money from the general fund to other places you need it. So, if the street levy doesn't pass, but we need money in the street fund, that would come from general fund money. So, and I don't know how council would vote, so I don't want to, I guess, add anymore. But to, I think there would be the possibility to have to repeal more of a credit, because now we're looking for ways to supplement the street levy as well as police and fire. And the general fund would be the only place you could get that money from.
Yeah. You can, we can discuss this more on Thursday in detail, but I just think, you know, like the schools, they sometimes say, if this levy doesn't pass, you're going to lose busing or you're going to lose athletics or whatever. I think we need to be 100% upfront with the voters, what's going to happen if this levy doesn't pass.
You're correct. I think we can talk about Thursday, but I think the quick answer to that is we're not getting our streets paved.
Well, and I think we might have somebody coming in from the committee who might be able to give us some more information on that in the future, things that we've used that money for in the past, the different streets we've had done with it.
Right. And Mr. Myers is right that the streets will, the street levy directly affects the streets getting paved, but in addition to that, sometimes we have our cost share, like the State Route 4 paving, which we have to pay some percentage of, which comes out of the street levy. But if we lose the street levy, we will then be forced to pay that share out of the general fund, which the general fund is currently in a 300,000 deficit. So, that would make that deficit even more severe.
And I think that's what she was alluding to, is why she couldn't tell us the dollar amount or the percentage if we were looking to eliminate a portion of the credit as one of the possibilities. That number would change.
But I just want, I just want it to be out there that this failure of this levy could impact more than just your street not getting paved. It could directly affect the general fund, which would then put more of safety forces at risk.
We'll make certain to go in depth with it.
Okay. Thursday, I'm hoping, I'm hoping you guys got all the numbers for that. Next, Economic Development Chair, Mr. Hickman.
I do not have a report at this time, but I would like to refer on Dewine's, Dewine's, I can't say that word, I can never say it.
Rural?
Yeah. On development to economic development, so that when it's brought up, we can actually talk about it.
I'll second that.
Mr. Hickman made a motion to refer Dewine's rural housing program to economic development, seconded by Mr. Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is referred. Any other questions for economic development? Seeing none. Service Committee Chair, Mr. Moritz.
We are very close to getting Chapter 900 Section signed off on by everyone. I think we only have like two signatures left to be signed off on, so I can start bringing it to council to look at. That's just where I'm at.
Any questions further for service committee? Seeing none. Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Rules or Procedures, Mrs. DeShawn.
We're awaiting on draft legislation for rules of procedure and codified ordinance chapters 111 and 113. End of my report.
Any questions for the ad hoc committee? Moving on. Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Property Maintenance, Mr. Me.
We've turned everything over to Mr. Gulbrich, so we're waiting on that. Beyond that, no report.
Any questions for the ad hoc committee? Seeing none. Zoning Committee Ad-Hoc, for zoning map, Mr. Me.
No report.
Any questions for the ad hoc committee? Seeing none. Traffic Commission, Mayor Trucco.
No report at this present time.
Any questions for Traffic Commission?
Yes, sir. Mr. Pollak did request that once you determine when you're going to hold a meeting, you'd like to know when the date is.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Traffic Commission? Seeing none. Need a motion to accept committee reports collectively?
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion. Ms. Sharrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They are accepted. Report of city officers, Mayor Trucco.
Thank you, Mr. President. We need a voice vote for the reappointment of Scott McBride to the Civil Service Commission retroactive to January 1, 2025. Follow-up about private water line hookup. Contractors are listed on the city of Bucyrus website. The city of Bucyrus Water Department is currently knocking on doors in Osceola, letting citizens know about their options for city water. The city of Bucyrus is excited to announce the official relaunch of its access channel, which is now live and ready to serve the community with a wealth of local content. The access channel is provided by Spectrum on Channel 1021 and is a public access platform designed to keep residents informed, engaged, and connected to the heart of Bucyrus. The initiative will provide residents with access to live and recent programming, including city council meetings, public service announcements, and exclusive content produced for Bucyrus residents. The access channel aims to enhance communication between city officials and the public and promote civic engagement through accessible media. For those who don't have access to Spectrum, the Bucyrus city council meetings will be posted on YouTube as soon as the process of exporting and uploading is completed. Mike Dewine Rural Housing Project, I asked this to be assigned to Mike Keefe to start the research of the requirements of this program. And at this present time, the housing that was being investigated, Kurt went ahead and reached out to a local developer. And at the present time, Mike was able to research and find existing prints that have been, went through the process. The prints actually show the layout of the street in the subdivision, as well as the prints also show exactly where the sewer lines would be located. And so, what needs to be done next is that those prints would have to be recertified by the developer. But in the meantime, Mike will go ahead and proceed forward with this and see what he can do to facilitate something, to get something started as far as the requirements that we have to meet to get maybe recognized by the Dewine project.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Sharrick.
How many local developers do we have?
I have no idea.
So, we reached out to one?
Well, this developer actually has plans already.
He already owns the land.
And owns the land.
And he owns the land.
That's what needed to be said. Okay. Thank you.
I need a motion for a voice vote for a reappointment of Scott McBride to the Civil Service Commission retroactive to January 1, 2025.
I don't need a motion. I just think you could take a voice vote.
Somebody still has to make a motion and second and then to vote.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Myers made a motion. Ms. Sharrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. McBride has been reappointed. Any other questions for the mayor?
I've got one other. Mayor, did, and have you guys talked to Spectrum at all with this whole process of getting the access channel back online? And if so, have they told you, a ballpark number, how many households are currently receiving Spectrum services in the city?
I have not asked how many households are on there. Bonnie Welsh has been working on this for over a past year.
So, the next question, is there any need for Facebook if we have the access channel?
That's where my question was leading to, because I think a majority of our citizens and residents no longer have data.
Well, as I stated, we will go ahead and actually upload and do the exporting of the meeting, and we'll put it on the following day on YouTube.
That's already being done?
Yes.
That's been done for this last year. So, what are you saying? Is something changing with anything else now that the face, or the Spectrum's came up, come online? Or is that going to be just a third way to view the meeting? Or is the, where are you going with this? Is the Facebook continuing as is?
No.
Facebook's not continuing as?
Facebook's not continuing. This will be done through YouTube.
So, is this meeting tonight livestreamed?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. But after tonight, there won't be livestreamed. It'll just be on YouTube and access channel only.
Correct.
And this isn't administrative decision. This is nothing council has any say in. So, any other questions for the mayor?
I just, if I could respectfully just share some opinions that have been given to me today. I feel like taking it off of the Facebook has taken a few steps backwards. We're encouraging our residents to get involved with what we're doing, and then we're going to take away a means that they have to watch live if they have to wait for it to be uploaded. I just think that very few people have cable anymore, and I think we're taking away a tool that some of the residents. And I understand a lot of the beef that everybody's making stinks about. Quite honestly, take the damn comments off. But I think that it looks like we're taking a step backwards and taking an access point of what's going on here in this room away from our citizens. So, I just wanted to respectfully share my opinion.
Any other comments?
We have a lot of people who have spoken out, saying that they don't want to take it off. I've gotten several messages myself.
Well, we can't take it off without, we can't take the comments off without taking it off completely, is my understanding. Yes, no? I believe that you could actually take the comment portion off and still have it live. I'm not 100% certain of it.
I know we're getting off topic here, but I will say, Mr. Gulbrich does share his opinion that we can't take them off. It's a First Amendment violation. My question is, then you look at all these other communities that are not allowing them, who's suing them?
They didn't put it on.
I was going to say.
Gallion did at one time.
If you look at my, and they're not doing it right. If you're looking at, if you're looking to just shut the livestream off for a period of time and then kick it back on with no comments, that would alleviate the whole issue. And that was also in my report.
What's a period of time?
Two meetings would be fine.
Okay. I like that.
So, we're going to take it completely off Facebook for two meetings, then we're going to put it back on without comments.
That's their decision.
I know, it's their decision.
That would be legally sufficient.
That would be legal, is what I'm asking.
Right. That would be legally sufficient.
And some cities don't even put it on at all.
Right.
So, like us having the YouTube and stuff, we're still doing more.
I just hate to take something away that's been utilized already. I get the beef with the comments. I'm not trying to get into that conversation. I'm just more looking, there are people, the people that are taking the time to reach out to us about it, they're ones that are actually watching it, interested in what's going on.
Any other comments? We're moving on. Final questions for the mayor? Seeing none. Safety Service Directors report, Mr. Starker.
Thank you, Mr. President. 2026, ODAT will be going to pave the Sandusky Avenue from Perry Street to the railroad tracks south of Swan Robert Building. Estimated share of the city of Bucyrus is 317,000. I'd like to refer this project to the Service and Finance Committees as an emergency. The northwest sewer separation project has started on Garnet Court. The city has contracted this with D2 excavation, excavation for this project. The propane tanks for the CSO 5 lift station AEP has been set. AEP has hooked up the electric and then, or will, has to hook up the electric, and then the project will be completed. The city has contracted, has a contract with BK Layer for this project. The Osceola water line project on Nevada Winford Road down the county line has started. They have the water lines installed. Road down the county line has started. They have the water lines installed to the Broken Sword Creek on the county line road, as well as some in Osceola. The city has contracted with driven excavation for this project. The State Route 4 South Waterline Expansion Project has not yet started. The city has awarded this project to BK Layer. On Wednesday, March 19, 2025, at 9:50, there will be a statewide tornado drill. We are encouraged residents of the City of Bucyrus to use this time to practice their tornado sheltering plans. Thank you.
Need a motion to refer the South Sandusky Avenue ODOT paving to...
Service and Finance.
Service and Finance.
So.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Hickman seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that 317,000 is coming out of the street levy fund, which is... Oh, that is correct.
Next year project.
So if we don't get the street levy passed, then that further puts our 300,000 deficit, another 300,000 in, and it's 600,000 plus.
Nailed it.
So we need the street levy to pass. So we have funds for these ODOT cost shares. Any other questions for the Service Director? Mr. Myers?
I meant to ask you earlier, and I didn't remember this. Had a resident reached out to me, they received a tag on their trash can saying their trash can is too big. Could you explain that? Because her argument to me was, well, she's had that same trash can for 10 years or so.
So the ordinance says it's a 45-gallon trash can you're allowed to have. They are tagging 90-gallon trash cans to have them switch them out for 45. We also are trash, tagging trash cans that have, that are beat up, that's hardly any trash can left. So...
So what about the ones that are being destroyed by our trash trucks? They literally have ripped the handles off of mine personally. I watched them toss one in front of the bus earlier and just heard it crack.
They tossed it in front of a bus?
Well, I was sitting there, they're in front of me. So I watched them. They were in front of me. They didn't throw it at the bus. But yeah, like, it's not always being treated properly. And we still have people complaining about the fact that they will go up the middle of the road, block traffic in both directions, so that they only have to go there once and get trash from both sides. And they're not doing it as bad blocking me, but I have still been getting phone calls.
Is a 90-gallon trash can, is the square one with the lid that...
There are 45 like that, too, because I have a 45 like that. But it's the bigger, it is the bigger ones. It's about, I'm gonna guess, four and a half foot tall.
I have to check. See, I have two of those as well with a lid that's smaller, so my guess is they're that. You know, for me, for years, they don't pick it up, they reach in and grab the bags out, which, you know, took my kids a long time to learn. Everything has to go into a bag. They're just laying there forever. I guess, her, the lady who called me, and I guess my question, too, what's the problem with the continued, when they're just reaching in and grabbing the three bags out?
Because they have to tip the trash cans in order to reach down to the bottom to grab them.
Where is the CSO-5 lift station?
It's West Drive.
Is that the one by the railroad bridge?
Yeah, well, kinda, yeah. It's the one out that way.
Is that the one that they had to bore under, re-bore?
Yeah, we had to, we had to put a lift station.
So there's a standby generator there?
There was, yes.
Any other questions for Service Director? Seeing none. Moving on. Do you have a report, Law Director?
Uh, no report.
Any questions for the Law Director? Reference to last meeting, the question of the voting, and how many members, since we're down one, is required for passing of legislation by emergency and stuff. I couldn't find any more information. So I'm just going to go with the advice of the Law Director. And if he's wrong, then it's his legal opinion. He can represent us if it's challenged. But so for the voting tonight, the number required to waive the second and third reading, is that been reduced to five instead of six, per your opinion?
Yeah.
And then the emergency legislation?
What did I say?
I thought it was five point something. So it still needed six of us to waive the second, third reading.
I think it would be five. Let me get my calculator out. Because it requires three-fourths to waive the reading.
I'm just gonna look at your report from the last meeting.
Uh, 4.5, so it would require five.
For the waiving of the second and third reading, and then for passage by emergency?
Two-thirds would...
Four out of six, per your report?
What'd you say?
Four out of six per your report.
So...
Five and four.
We will need five votes to waive the second and third readings and four for passage of emergency. This is per the advice of the Law Director. Any other questions for the Law Director?
If we have just a vote on something that's not emergency, as a simple majority, there's six of us, so it would be at least four.
Correct.
So if it was three to three, you would vote?
Correct.
That is correct. And if anybody wants to redo the YMCA vote, I would be glad to break that tie. So, moving on to the Auditor's Report. Ms. Lewis?
I am presenting to council, and you will find in your packets, the signed Fiscal Officer Certificate. It states that the maximum principal amount of $1,050,000 of the anticipated bond will be used for the purpose of improving the city's water work system, including construction and reconstruction. Section 1 requests the auditor determine the estimated period of usefulness of the improvement is at least five years. After eight years, small maintenance costs can be associated with waterline projects, but their period of usefulness far outlasts that five-year mark. Section 2 states the maximum maturity of the anticipated bond would be less than 20 years, but more than five years. The Bond Ordinance Council will be voting on tonight, prepared as an emergency measure by Bond Council, which is Squire, Patton, and Boggs, authorizes the city to issue bonds on a federally taxable basis in the maximum principal amount of $1,050,000. Note that the maximum principal authorization preserves the flexibility to actually issue less for particular purpose, for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the municipal water work system, including the construction, reconstruction, installation, and repair of water distribution lines between certain termini in the city, together with all necessary... Apparent, I don't know that word.
Parentheses.
Yeah, that one. There, too. The Bond Ordinance also provides that interest will be payable on June 1 and December 1 of each year, commencing on a date to be determined by the auditor and the certificate of award, expected to commence on December 1, 2025. Principal will be payable on December 1 in each of these years, determined by the auditor and the certificate of award, consistent with certain parameters set forth in the Bond Ordinance, expected to be 2025 through 2039, provided. The Bond Ordinance does permit the city to shorten the final maturity to 15 years or less. The auditor will determine the actual principal amount of the bond to be sold, not exceeding $1,050,000. The bonds are to be dated as determined by the auditor and the certificate of award, provided that their dated date shall not be more than 60 days prior to the closing date. The bonds will be sold at a net interest rate of not more than 7% per year. As Bond Council understands that the city will make a limited offering of the bonds to a sophisticated... Yeah, thank you. Expected to be the Huntington Public Capital Corporation. The Bond Ordinance does not authorize the preparation and delivery of an official statement or a continuing disclosure agreement. Interest on the bonds will be taxable for the purpose of federal income taxation. And then as far as referrals for the night, to Finance Committee, Ordinance 37-2023, to reflect the exchange of funds as an advance instead of a transfer. And that is it for my report.
Any questions for the Auditor? Seeing none. We have a Treasurer's Report.
Mr. President, she had a referral there at the last sentence.
I need a motion to refer to the Finance Committee, Ordinance 37-2023.
So.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrod seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We decide that at a committee meeting. Referrals are emergency versus not emergency.
Treasurer's Report is here, dated February 2025. I'm just looking at it. And I do see, so when something has a parentheses, that means it's negative, right? So the Waterworks Fund is 1.2 million negative right now, which is why we need the bond. I seen another one on here that was negative. The Crime Victim Assistance, what's up with...
So that's the VOKA. So that tends to work on, so they, we put in every month, we have to put in for the grant, and then they give us the money. So there's sometimes that one lags behind because we're waiting for those funds to come in.
Okay.
One's a, VOKA is a federal grant, and SBAA is a state grant.
What's the Northwest Storm Sewer Separation?
That would be a project for the Northwest Storm Sewer Separation, a grant, or a fund specifically for that.
Because it's 49,000 negative?
Which, if that's a grant as well, then more than likely, we have an outstanding, we have rent money on a purchase order, but we haven't been reimbursed for it yet.
Okay. I need a motion to accept a Treasurer's Report.
So.
Second.
Ms. Sherrod made the motion. Mr. Myers seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have the 2024 Year End Police Chief Report with us tonight. And I read through the first part of it. And there's been no robberies last year, which is good. He did mention there's a lot of retirements that could be coming, and how many do we budget for this year? Just one?
There's a line for under fire or police, and it would say retirement.
But if, I kinda remember hearing that the police, we budgeted for one, and the fire, we budgeted for one. So if, if we end up having two retirements out of police this year, that, that could affect us more than what we had budgeted for 2025.
Yes, yes. We would have to appropriate money. If that, if we had, if we spent more in that line, then we would have to, if I can't figure out how to transfer it from somewhere else in that line. Say, you know, for instance, maybe our healthcare will be less than we thought it would. I can move that money if there's enough without having to come to council, because you guys pass it in that section in the budget. But if it was more than what we could spare anywhere in that section, then we would have to appropriate money or transfer from another section in the budget.
Okay.
Just a second. I'm looking at police right now. We have nothing for police retirement buyouts at this point in time in Fund 202. In fire, we have $50,000. So we have none budgeted for the police.
So we have nothing budgeted?
They shared with us earlier on, when we were doing the budget, that they didn't have anybody who's anticipating. They have some that are eligible, but they didn't have any anticipated.
Yeah.
Did you want me to read his letter? It's pretty lengthy.
No, I don't think we need to read the whole thing.
I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, well, we could have. You never know. Some people might decide they're gonna retire that you didn't think was coming. So moving on from that, we'll, we'll just wait till the whole end to accept that. But the Fire 25, February 25 Fire EMS Report is also in here. And I guess we need a motion to accept all city officers' reports.
Can you do that as an acceptance filing? Since we didn't do that for the last two? There's no filing in that phrase.
I need a motion to accept the city officer's reports, including the filing of the police and fire report.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrod seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Visitors input regarding reports of standing slash special committees and of city officers. Is there any visitors' input?
We've been off 210 Ethel Street. Last couple meetings, there's been talk about housing, 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 and developing for housing. And my opinion, I think we're getting the cart before the horse. You need money to buy a house. You need money to pay rent. I think manufacturing and industry should be coming before we think about housing. Thank you.
So, Mr. Fedoff?
Yes?
This Dewine program will pay for all the, potentially, the underground utilities and the road for like a subdivision. So the city, if that's, if that happens, would have no cost in that. The builder, if he decides he's gonna build or market a house, he's doing that at his own expense. So we don't have any, under this situation, we wouldn't have any cost in of our own. So we'd basically just be getting the builder to more sooner be able to offer lots for sale than what he would normally. But I, I do understand your concern.
Yeah, I just think more attention should be paid towards getting more industry here instead of worrying about housing right now. I see what you're saying about...
It's, it's a what came first, the chicken or the egg?
Yeah.
And, you know, you can't plop a Wendy's down in the middle of a field out in Holmes Township because there's no houses there. I think if the houses come in...
You can't buy a house working at Wendy's either. So I'm talking industry and high-paying manufacturing jobs. I'm not talking a fast food place and pizza place. We need to concentrate on getting some jobs here in town. It's just, that's just a fact. If, if we don't do it now, who's gonna do it? There's so much, it gets put on the back burner. Let's let the next administration do it. We gotta start somewhere. We gotta start somewhere.
15 years ago, I said at one of them breakfasts that the, I think, economic development put on out the hospital one morning, and there was a bunch of people there, and they had some of these factories talking. The general managers of the plants were saying they couldn't, there's not enough people here. They said that there's not enough workforce in your area. So after I heard that, that always stuck with me. And I'm like, we gotta get the housing here. There's no, there's not enough workforce to support another factory. You bring another factory in right now, you're just gonna have people leaving the existing factories and creating vacancies.
You're gonna have people from out of town coming to Bucyrus to work, like I go to Mansfield to work, because there's nothing here. It's just the way it is. Someone's gonna have to start this one of these days. We gotta get some stuff in here. And I'm hoping we start it soon. Thank you.
Do you have any leads, Brad? Do you have any leads?
Any leads?
Any leads? I mean, is Gorman Rupp looking for a satellite factory?
Well, Gorman Rupp is actually giving a lot of business to, business north of town here that no one ever talks about, Shelter Works. So my business is giving business to Bucyrus business.
That's a satellite. That's what I was calling out.
But Mike Dewine is giving money for housing. I'm sure there's money to be given for developing land for, say, Amazon. Amazon, or somebody says, hey, Bucyrus, we wanna come to Bucyrus. Are we anywhere near the point where we could say, oh, yeah, we got a spot for you?
There are spots out there. There are spots out there.
The industrial part?
But for the large scale you're talking about, no. The problem is, is that it's privately owned by farmers, and the farm ground in Crawford County has been artificially inflated to 11,000 to $12,000 an acre, where you go up to, you know, Seneca County, it's still $6,000 an acre.
And then getting off of it.
And that's the problem. If you want to build something, you're gonna go 30 miles that way and pay a heck of a lot less money.
Or they're gonna come and build right outside the city limits. We need to start annexing outside the city limits.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's all privately owned farm ground, all around Bucyrus. That's expensive as all get out right now. You know, that's why, if you wanna build a subdivision to build a house, you're gonna go up and do it in Seneca County at half the cost to obtain the land is what it is here. That's our, that's our downfall right now.
Something like Amazon comes here to build, they're gonna build right outside the city, so that's not gonna do us any good, anyway.
Well, they're not, they're not gonna buy the ground here. That's the problem.
Yeah, well, and I'll tell you why it would do us good. Because the large... Because a large facility like that is going to need fire suppression, which means probably about an eight or 10 or 12 inch water main. And they're going to come to us wanting that. And at that point, we tell them, we're not giving you that large of a water line. Well, they're, they're going to need sewer too. And right now our ordinance reads if you, if you get city sewer, you sign a deed restriction that says if you ever become contiguous, your property will automatically annex. Even if it's 20 years later that it becomes contiguous because some, there might be a parcel in between.
That's what I'm saying. We need to start that. Someone needs to start that. We can't just be, keep putting it off, let the next ones do it. We got to start it.
The deed restrictions?
No, getting the area around Bisciris prepped and ready for industry to come in. They can't come in right now. And I'm saying again, industry needs to come before housing, in my opinion. Thank you.
Any other public participation? Seeing none, consideration of, oh. Sorry, I didn't see you there.
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Rock 4. Thank you for referring that to, um, to economic development. Housing is a development, so if they're paying for the infrastructure, is that what I'm understanding? Mr. Fankhauser, they're paying for the infrastructure?
Yeah, so like this, normally when a developer wants to develop land, it's all on them. Like if they buy a field, they would have to run the sewer lines and the water lines and pave the road in there. And then after that's all ran, they turn it over to the city. But this situation with the Dewine Rural Housing Program is, Dewine's program pays for that cost of running the infrastructure underground without the developer having to. So it kind of speeds up.
So just, like, so people, so I'm understanding essentially it would, there isn't a cost to the city for that, correct? We're not having to pay a percentage? Okay. I think that's not being, it's hard to find information on it, first of all. I was looking at it myself. But housing is like a development, is an industry. So, I mean, getting housing, I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea. I mean, I don't think there's a cart before the horse type of thing. I mean, they're run concurrently or, you know, simultaneously with each other. The other thing is I just sent an email to the mayor, Bonnie and Mr. Gobrick. My, I wanted to bring it up just so it was, could be handled expeditiously, but could we switch to YouTube as the live stream and disable the contents and there wouldn't be any disruption?
What was that?
Could you switch to YouTube as a live streaming service and there not be any disruption? Because I've.
Yes.
Talked to Bonnie about it. Like she, I don't know if you guys know how much work she does on those videos once it's been done on Facebook. She has to first export it, which I do that myself for work and it takes a lot of time. So she has to wait for it to export, then she has to import it and upload it to YouTube. Then she goes through and she actually marks every single person in part of the meeting, which is very helpful, but it might just save extra steps. It might just be like a streamlined process.
So she did the YouTube initially as the live streaming? You don't have to do any of that, it's already done?
Right, it's already uploaded to the service.
That's a win-win.
Correct. And if we do it without comments when we start it, it's fine.
It would be less steps. Just a thought. Alright, thank you.
So back to the housing that Mrs. Slater brought up. I believe with all the, you know, Columbus, I've been seeing is been now ranked the largest or the most fast growing city or something like that. I thought I seen something like that. That's not that far from us. Okay, we're only 60 minutes from there. So there's, there's going to be stuff pushing our way. There's going to be more housing opportunities and need, even though we're 60 minutes away. And part of the long-term, like let's say some developer comes in and wants to put, let's say they want to buy 100 acres directly adjacent to the city or something. In order for that developer's project to be feasible, the city's going to have to have large infrastructure, being water lines and sewer lines, like going towards that end of town. Otherwise, you know, if you need, I'm just going to say, for example, a 12 inch water line on that land west of, uh, is it called Heritage now? That nursing home? I forget what it used to be called.
Orchard Park.
Or, no, no, I'm thinking on Lincoln Highway going out towards Winford there.
Oh.
Yeah, Legacy. So, so let's say a developer wants to go in there and they need the large sewer and the large water lines. Well, if we don't have that stuff built up to that part of town, we could be in a situation where it's going to take us years of redoing streets and stuff to get them lines out there. So the long-term strategy of the city, you know, and that's partly this water line going out south Sandusky, which is 100 years old and it's in bad shape. We need to be on top of making sure that our infrastructure has future growth capabilities because when the developers come knocking, they're not going to want to wait seven years for us to get a water line, you know, halfway across town or something. So I think we need to be making these, you know, infrastructure upgrades now so that when these housing developments start pushing up from Columbus, we're ready. I think that's a smart move for us. Even if we don't have another factory, if we could get 200 more houses in town right now, that would be huge. Yes, you can, Ray.
Keep in mind, you said people outside of Columbus could possibly come to Bisciris. They're not going to if the out of town credit is revoked. They're not going to come here and pay Columbus tax and Bisciris tax. Keep that in mind.
That is true. Ray is, Ray is true, Ray is right with that. So there's a lot of moving parts here that need to be considered. But at this point, we're going to move on to consideration of proposed legislation for the first time, unless there was any other visitors' input that I missed. No other visitors' input. We're going to move on, consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed ordinance 15-2025. That's the bond ordinance for the Water Works Fund. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $1,050,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the municipal waterwork system, including the construction, reconstruction, installation and repair of water distribution lines between certain termini in the city, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency. Resolution 211-2025, it's, uh, airport authorization for bids for the terminal. Authorizing and directing the Bisciris Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bisciris, Ohio to advertise for bids for construction of the new airport terminal to be at the Port Bisciris Crawford County Airport and declaring an emergency. Proposed resolution 212-2025, that's the Cruising with the Cops street closures. Authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director of the City of Bisciris, Ohio to be, to ban all vehicular traffic, including bicycles and skateboards, except authorized emergency personnel for the Cruising with the Cops Custom and Classic Car Show on Saturday, June 14th, 2025.
Need a motion to accept as a first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Consideration of proposed legislation for the second time.
Proposed ordinance 12-2025, it's 2025 manpower. An ordinance amending ordinance number 20-2024 establishing the compensation and human resource staffing, sick leave and vacation of employees of various departments in the City of Bisciris, Ohio and enacting in its place legislation pertaining to the compensation and human resource staffing, sick leave and vacation of employees of various departments in the City of Bisciris, Ohio, commencing retroactively to January 1st, 2025 and declaring an emergency. Proposed ordinance 13-2025, it's Bisciris Codified Ordinance 1187.021 or PONs. Establishing section 1187.021 entitled PONs and chapter 1187 entitled Additional District Standards under title 11 entitled Additional Zoning Requirements under part 11 entitled Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Bisciris. Proposed ordinance 14-2025, it's Bisciris Codified Ordinance 1193.01 or Solar Panels. Establishing section 1193.01 entitled Solar Panels under chapter 1193 entitled Solar Panels under title 11 entitled Additional Zoning requirements under part 11 entitled Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Bisciris. Proposed resolution number 210-2025, it's 316-320 Woodlawn. Changing that from AR to R3 district. A resolution amending the official zoning district map to officially rezone 316 Woodlawn Avenue to 320 Woodlawn Avenue from designation apartment residential district or AR to urban neighborhood residential district or R3 and directing the engineering department to effectuate this change post haste and directing the mayor and council president to sign said official zoning district map upon said changes being made.
Need a motion to accept as a second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Did I ask for public participation on the first reading?
No, you didn't.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to ask for, is there any public participation for anything that's been read for the first or second time? Seeing none. Consideration of proposed legislation for the final time.
Proposed resolution 207-2025, it's the ODOT State Rock 4 North project. The following resolution enacted by the City of Bisciris of Crawford County, Ohio, here and after referred to as the city in the matter of the stated described project. Proposed resolution 208-2025, it's the Rottweiler's Festival street closures. Authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director of the City of Bisciris, Ohio to ban, to ban all vehicular traffic, including bicycles and skateboards, except authorized emergency personnel for the 2025 Bisciris Rottweiler's Festival according to the schedule set forth herein. Further, authorizing and directing the chief of police to make necessary arrangements for the rerouting of traffic on federal, state and local highways and roadways.
Need a motion to accept as a final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the final time. Anybody? Don't see anybody. So at this point, all of that is referred back to their originating committees. And I'm going for the committee reports with finance.
All right, finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 12-2025, which is the 2025 manpower. Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 15-2025, the Bond Water Works Fund. And finance is favorable to proposed resolution 211-2025, airport authorization for bids.
Plating committee.
Plating committee is favors proposed ordinance 13-2025, BCO 1189.021 PONs. Plating is favorable to proposed ordinance 14-2025, BCO 1193.01 Solar Panels. And proposed resolution favorable to proposed resolution 210-2025, 316-320 Woodlawn, AR to an R3.
Service committee.
Service is in favor of proposed resolution 207.2025, ODOT State Rock 4 North.
Health and Safety Committee.
Health and Safety is favorable to proposed resolution 208-2025, dealing with Rottweiler's Festival street closures. And Health and Safety is favorable to proposed resolution 212-2025, Cruising with the Cops street closures.
Further consideration of pending legislation, we have first up ordinance 12-2025, which was held to a first reading at the last meeting. However, it was requested as an emergency. So we would need a motion to waive the third reading of proposed ordinance 12-2025. Does anybody want to make that motion? Seeing none. 12-2025 is held to a second reading. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance 15-2025, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Hickman seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 15-2025?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Maritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Ordinance 15-2025 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance 211-2025, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Mr. Maritz made the motion. Mr. Myers seconded.
Maritz?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 211-2025?
So moved.
Mr. Maritz made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Resolution 211-2025 is duly adopted. Do I hear a motion to adopt resolution 207-2025?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Maritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Resolution 207-2025 is duly adopted. Do I hear a motion to adopt resolution 208-2025?
So moved.
A second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Resolution 208-2025 is duly adopted. Old and unfinished business. Does anybody have any old and unfinished business? Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, the administration and the law director has had sit down and we went ahead and went through the food truck legislation and it will be ready for Mr. DeShawn.
For the committee this Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. I guess now's an appropriate time to bring up the, uh, not the, not the YMCA. The North End Fire Station did not sell at the public auction or the public bidding?
I have, uh, I'm anticipating making another, another referral Thursday night regarding that property to put it back to bid.
So it's already in committee?
Yes. Yeah, I verified that with law director.
Okay, and we only sold out of the two by Wendy's. There was one.
Just one.
Which was the one beside Clade's. So no bidders on the one by Pisanellos between there and Wendy's and no bidders on the, uh, North End Fire Station. Any other old and unfinished business? Any new business? I do not see any new business.